This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, so we're a little bit behind schedule, but a couple of minutes, but anyway, as I said to Sarah, there's only the three of us tonight. Paul and Cindy are unavailable. So I will officially open the March 16th, 2022 Southampton Planning Board Meeting. And our first agenda item is Gary, Attorney Gary LaCory, who is representing Gil Farm Estates off of Pequot Road. And he's requesting release of lots eight and nine. Attorney LaCory.
Yeah, on behalf of Gil Farm Road Estates, I am seeking a release of the performance covenants for lots eight and nine. We requested last month a release for lots four and seven. And we've made a lot of progress in terms of the subdivision itself, and we should be 90% completed by the middle of June this year. Talking to everybody and we've got some contracts coming up with Andrick and everything. And I understand your position that in terms of the construction itself, this is probably the last last two lots that you're going to give the release of the performance covenants on. But what we're going to have a lot of work done too there soon. So I think it's a it's a it's a fair request in light of everything, in light of the work that's been done and will be done shortly on the subdivision.
Yeah, I've consulted with others on this and yeah, it is. May I be so bold as to ask what the lots are selling for?
Yeah, they're somewhere about $140,000 a lot.
Okay.
It was 142.5, I think, was the.
The only reason I'm asking is I just want to make sure if you come forward again that I've got with without an estimate in hand on what it's going to take to complete that. I don't want to give the farm away before everything is done. So I just wanted to have that in my.
We will not come with another request until we have the finish coat down and the sidewalks down on the southern border.
Right. Okay, so eight and nine, as you heard Attorney LaCory say, four and seven were released last meeting, so eight and nine, do I have any other questions for the board on that?
Just to clarify, there's nine lots total, and this would be four being released out of the nine.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, Dan?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
Oh, I make a motion to release those two lots.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Dan, seconded by Sarah. Any other further discussion? All in favor, say aye, Sarah.
Aye.
Dan? All aye. Three. Oh, unanimous?
Aye.
Sorry, my thing was off.
Okay, Attorney LaCory, I will add eight and nine to the four and seven, and I will get that out to you in the morning with the release.
Very good. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Second agenda item, it's not on your agenda, but it came in the mail, or not the mail, my mailbox at town hall, it's just a building permit. And it's from Richard and Paul Trueheart, and the property address is 118 College Highway. And you're probably familiar with it. If you've seen some land disturbance between farms and Park Place, there's a lot there. There was a small house and a small barn or a shed on that lot, which is going to come down. But they are going to be constructing two, two family condos. Similar, similar to the ones you might say on Palmer Meadow Road that were done, they're standalone buildings. And I had Paul for GALL because she sent an email. I hope you people saw it. I did.
Yeah.
He did the calc's on it, and it came in at 31,745 for disturbance, so it's under the stormwater management by law. So I would all things being considered, ask for a motion to approve that building permit.
Oh, was a, I received a question via email. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
So where was the question? About the lot size. So the question someone had sent to me was how, how big does a lot have to be in the residential village zone for two houses? The house at 118 College Highway was torn down. We, this came from the comm. We received a building permit application in the comm. Mail slot today showing two houses being built on one and a quarter acre parcel. There's no wetlands. The new address is 18A and B. Interesting. What's the actual question here? I should no, she should just so she's just, she's just asking what the what the lot size has to be for residential village for two houses is your question?
Uh, it's got to be a minimum of 30,000 square feet.
So.
That's, this lot is 35%?
It's 40,000 square feet plus or minus on, I'm just looking at Paul's, it's something in pencil on what Paul had sent out. So.
Actually, I'm looking at one of the plans that he attached to building permit, 40,876.
Yeah.
Okay.
How does that, that work with two homes? Because I mean, if that's, it's definitely not twice as big as a residential lot. So they're putting two homes on one lot that's the size for, it's a residential lot and I, does one person own each of those like a condo development?
Evidently, because there's one driveway going in that's going to serve as both of them. And there's four on the turnout, which is required. There's four striped parking places probably for guests or whatever, but the turnout is required anyway, but they, they strike four spots in there for additional parking. And they each got their own garage. They're not, they're not, they're not attached either. They're separate.
Like, I couldn't just build another house on my lot, right? Like, I guess I'm just curious how this is covered in our zoning bylaws. I, I'm not familiar, other than like an ancillary apartment or something, how we cover multiple residences on one lot.
Um, good question. I'm I'm not all that familiar. This hadn't come up in a while. And it's different than the one on Palmer Meadow Road because there was actually, it's not because that, that's on one parcel. So you know, the ones that were constructed, 155, 157?
Yeah.
So it's obvious allowed, otherwise the building inspector wouldn't have sent it along. Where I'm a relatively sure.
I mean, it actually seems like a way to potentially have affordable options too, as to something, you know? I'm not opposed to it. I just wasn't clear how, it's just interesting too, you know, if you own one, you share a septic with somebody else, but that's more just curiosity.
Just look at the plan here. I thought they had separate.
It's a proposed double compartment, 1500 gallons.
Yeah, so it is. It's one, it's one for the both of them.
Yeah, it looks like they have each go into their own tank and then to a joint leach field.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. No, it's interesting because that that's one of the things that we asked Ken Comey there with the affordable, to look at multiple units on parcels. I mean, even reducing the size further than what it is. Of course, this is in the commercial highway. Commercial highway is 40, as I said, 40,000 140 frontage, so maybe with the upcoming redo of zoning on that, maybe we can get some smaller lots with smaller buildings.
Yeah.
Anybody, anything else, Dan, on that or?
No, that was just an email that had come in to me, so I wanted to make sure we addressed it at this meeting. So.
All right, um, do I have a motion to approve that permit?
Um, go ahead, sorry.
I just got, so this is an A and R, right? Since it's.
No, it's not just, no, just, just a, just a building permit. It's the lot, the lot is already divided years ago.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
Oh, I'll make the motion to approve the building permit.
I'll second that.
Any other further discussion? All in favor, Sarah?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
All aye.
Um, I, I would probably be interested to get clarification when we work with Penn on how exactly, you know, multiple homes on one lot, you know, how we can clarify that if it needs to be clarified.
It's, um, it's different than a common driveway, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Different. All right, I don't have any other business of that nature. The main purpose of this was going to be minutes to catch up on, but I just want to double check to make sure there was no other requests came in here. Nothing else. So if you want now to pull up that folder that I sent you regarding minutes, see if we can't catch up on those, and that's my fault. They are, they're posted on my town government, but I had failed to get the formal approval for some reason or other. I thought with everything being recorded and televised that it wasn't necessary, but it is necessary, so. I to those, bear with me a second. All right, so even though you Dan, you came on in what month? I think you came in, I can't hear you, you're, are you muted?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. I have to guess. Do you remember?
I think, I thought it was February, maybe March?
Okay.
Dan, you came on a year before me though, right?
Yeah, I was on, I was on before you. I was actually, remember I was, I was voted on, so.
Right, so I was May 2021. So were you the May before, or did they have the election later that year?
And my first emails are from April of 2021, so.
All right, we'll start with the January 6, 2021. And as I was going to allude to Robert's Rules of Order says that you did not have to be present at a particular meeting that the minutes were taken and approved. And you can add a comment or you can virtually take the recommendations from the members that were present at that time. So as you can see, that meeting was on Zoom. It was a continuation of a public hearing. And I think you were in on this at the end, toward the end, Sarah, was the Stormwater Public Hearing for Greg Felton on 32 High Street.
Sure.
I think that was toward, we were at the end of it after a continuation when you jumped on, I think.
Okay, I know I'd been sitting in on a few at that period before it was.
Right before you remember, right?
Yeah.
So those minutes and the conditions, which was the most important thing, was a box covert, a precast box covert to be provided there where the brook crosses his driveway up there. And that was the main contention. The hearing was approved. The permit was approved with that condition. Then the other item that night that was big was the public hearing on the MS for Stormwater General Bylaw that was quite a undertake. That was also approved. And then building, building permit issued. So do I have a motion? Do you have any questions on that?
Uh, no questions.
No questions. A motion to approve the minutes as written.
Motion, Sarah, second, Dan?
Oh, yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Next, we'll go to January 20th. And that was a presentation by the Open Space Recreation Plan. Administrator Gibson was in speaker that night. The board approved that plan. Then we decision review on the stormwater conditions at 32 High Street, the box covert at the stream crossing. Evidently, when I drew up the decision, I did not indicate box covert. I just had covert, so it was brought to our attention that that had to be corrected, which I did. That was approved. Then there was another discussion with Larry Smith at the time that was outlining section six and seven of the bylaws. And that was pretty much it for that meeting.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll go. Next meeting was March 17th. There were no meetings in February at all. Uh, there was a public hearing for a stormwater application for David and Susan Huntley at 151 East Street, which there were no issues with, although I think there was a condition. Yes, Paul for GALL suggested a revised map to delineate the erosion control perimeter, which was faintly outlined. Ultimately, that was approved. It was three building permits. There were some address assignments. Cindy reported on MPIC and Open Space. Uh, the grant from PVPC was approved for a portable housing study. And there were some warrants, and that was pretty much it there. Any questions?
Nope.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next is April 7th. There's only one meeting in March, so this is April 7th. That was a public hearing for the zone change request by American Dream Realty for 173, 175 College Highway. Requesting the change from residential village to commercial village. Uh, that was quite a heated discussion, lively discussion, I should say, not heated, but lively.
Well attended.
Yes, I sat in on that one.
Right, and several, several people were in on that. Ultimately, the board, Cindy made a motion not to, in other words, her exact words were to deny the zone change, and that was met with a 2-2-0 stalemate. And it was referred after that to Town Council because a tie vote denies it, so to speak. In any event, the Town Council said that the planning board really didn't even have to weigh in on it. And it ultimately went to town meeting and it was denied there. The other order of business that night was the subdivision extension by Attorney Gary LaCory, who was on here a while ago for Gil Farms due to delays construction. And as you heard him say just a little while ago, it looks like they'll be pretty well complete by June of '22, so his extension was until 2023, but hopefully that won't occur. Uh, there was no other business other than Heath Lock was going to make a site visit to 71 White Loa Road for a possible stormwater violation, but never, nothing ever came of that. It's pretty much it. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
May 5th. Uh, Zoom meeting again. There was an A and R, two A and Rs. Address assignments. Committee reports. And then the reduced bond on Helen Way. And then a letter from KP Law that of their finding that board's vote will have to go to town meeting as the board was only making a recommendation that had no majority vote to approve or disapprove.
I'm motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next meeting was June, I'm sorry.
I think it's the document, the file is says 618, and then the word on top says August 18. Is that what you're seeing too?
Yes.
Let's see, which one was a Wednesday?
Let me, um, let's pass over that a minute. Maybe I've got the other one filed, misfiled, so let's just skip that one a minute.
Okay.
68.
Yeah, June 18th was not a Wednesday, August 18th was a Wednesday, just to.
Oh, well, wait a minute. Hold on just a second. What were the, what have you have for your calendar in front of you that were the Wednesdays in June?
Um, 2021, June was the 2nd and the 16th were Wednesdays.
I mean, let's come back to that. Maybe this is misfiled. Could be, we didn't meet in June either. That's, that's what I want to go back and check. So let's skip that one and go to 721. Uh, A and R for Crooked Legend Maple Street, 86 Valley Road, then a public hearing on a residential stormwater application from Ryan and Kate in the north for 8385 Valley Road. And the conditions on that one were install a 50-foot tracking pad at driveway entrance and also extend the fiber logs around the perimeter. That was approved. There's one two building permits. And then our committee appointments after the election of officers were listed. And warrants. You have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 All right, so that was 721. Okay, so that's, that probably has got to be the, because the only meeting in August was the 18th, correct?
I think so.
Yeah. Something tells me I can't check right now, but something tells me we didn't meet at all in June.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm looking, uh, the two meetings that we had scheduled in June, say canceled on the MyTown government site.
All right. Thank you. It's a 721, so then we go to, we'll go back to that 618, and I'll correct that afterwards. That's, that's 88. Right, Sarah, or no?
Yes, it could be 818 is the August meeting.
Yeah, okay. All right. There was an A and R for Valley Road, dress assignment. Another zoning revision work session where Larry Smith announced his retirement. Recommended the contact Richard Harris. That was pretty much it there. Motion? That was pretty much it there. Motion?
Um, I just have a question. Some of the earlier ones, you had put whoever wasn't in attendance as a note. Some of them, this one doesn't have that. I don't know if that matters, if you want to add it. I just, it's something you've done on a lot of the other minutes if somebody was absent.
Yeah, gotcha.
Again, I don't know if it.
So Cindy, so Cindy was not there at that one, right?
Yeah.
All right, I'll go back in and change that.
That was that motion to approve.
And?
Second.
All in favor? Hi. See, let me get next September. September 15. The only thing, a major event there was the introduction of Richard Harris, who we hired for our board consultant and his terms. There was some committee reports. Ty and Bond requested information on how many stormwater permits were issued in the last five years before the MS or since, yeah, before the MS for a fine lot of times. That was it there.
You say September 15?
9/15, right.
Okay, thank you. Second.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Go to October 6. This is the one that I was not at. Paul Forgot was at the meeting that night. And there was a building permit for 23 Montgomery Road. Committee reports. And the other with the board approved a joint meeting with the Building Cons Common Highway Department to discuss the status of 32 High Street per the request of the butter.
Yeah, should we say anything else about what Mr. McNichols was there about?
If you, if you want to be a little bit more definitive.
Just maybe something along, I mean, it was kind of time for the public, you know, Mr. Mc, or Mr. Dan McNichols came to the board with concerns regarding 32 High Street.
Yep.
I don't feel like we need to capture it too specifically beyond that, but just that he, he approached us with a concern.
All right. Okay, anything else on that?
Now, a motion to approve with that additional, no.
Yep, a second.
All in favor? Hi. We go to 10/20.
Yep.
One A and R, many reports. Other business request from Ryan Gila, her to reduce the bond amount to $50,000 for Helen Way. And motion, or as bill plans to be completed and sent to Highway Superintendent Camp. I had to meet with a select board for the semi-annual report, which at that meeting of the 32 High Street issue was also brought up, by the way. And that's it. Warrant.
Second.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
11/3, November 3. We had a zoning revision work session. Committee reports. The, on the other business, the board moved to waive the right of first refusal for the land situated on East Street consisting of 20.3 acres. Board approved the request for extension of the stormwater permit for Fulton at 32 High Street until the spring so they could get at it again because the box covert at that point, as you recall, was still not installed. That was it. I didn't know warrant.
This is just a typo, but in the committee report, it says, "Sarah Port on Housing Production Meeting via Zoom," and it says, "All Chairman Demon will attend." Sorry if it was gonna say all will attend, but I, I know you did attend, so maybe just delete the word "all."
Yeah, you're right. Thank you.
A motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Hi.
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 Go to December 1. This was a joint meeting with the Housing Authority. I think Sarah, you were under the weather that night, I believe.
Correct. I had a cold and around Thanksgiving, early December, if you remember that specifically.
So we met upstairs in Town Hall and kicked around ideas about how to approach portable housing and such. Our board meeting was, I mean, we had an A and R, but there was none. There was a building permit for 43 Pequot Road, but then we convened into the work session, a lot of ideas were kicked around. Eventually, what came out of it, luckily, that the PBPC, we got a DOTA to help work on some of those solutions to those issues we're faced with. So we are lucky to get that, but it was a good meeting. The other item there after the housing was approved to amend the contract for Richard Harris for additional $5,000 for the revisions, which would make his contract $10,000 for this fiscal year. That was pretty much it there.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. And finally, for 2021, December 15, A and R for Montgomery Road. Another work session for zoning. That's pretty much it. It was Merry Christmas after that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so I gotta change the June 18th to August 18. And that's it. And I'll get these, they're on the website. I'll just approve them and correct and make the edits. Dan, you did a marvelous job with the last
Thanks.
last time. You're, you're a lot more concise than I.
Well, it's probably easier because you're, you're running the meeting and trying to type at the same time, so I can, I can just type away, so.
So I appreciate your, your your detail, but you don't have to be so detailed. I mean, I mean, it's, it's
I understand.
If you want to type away, that's, that's sure, but I mean, you're, you don't have to be, you're
Yeah.
But it's, you did a great job with it. Thank you.
I'll use the level of detail I need.
Hopefully, next meeting, I can get the rest of those caught up for this year. And then we'll see if we can get into some sort of a routine to do it meeting after meeting before the Attorney General comes and removes me.
Oh, boy.
Sends, sends the state police after me. I don't have anything else, I don't think. Oh, I do have a warrant. Richard Harris sent his bill for February, which was considerable.
We had a couple of meetings with him. We had that extra meeting with him in February.
And a lot of it was, you know, the codification that he had done and come to find out it's we won't go there anymore on the E.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But I mean, that's why it was so extensive. But it was a total of 18, 10, and 64 cents. Need a motion to approve his bill.
I just have, I don't have an issue with this bill, but I do have one question related to him. He's not currently spending any more hours unless, well, you call him with something, right? Is that the direction he's under right now?
Yeah. And furthermore, he's, he's on the show coming up for a while, but you know, I've had some I've had some communication with him that have been very brief about the E360 because he wants to get between the town clerk, which he could provide me with, and he's trying to put together what they're offering for the contract. And I've got to get in contact with the point person for Cody 360 and ask her for her permission to speak directly to him to know what they've exactly done and what they're going to do, so he doesn't duplicate it again. So I mean, his emails and stuff, like Dan asked him before, he's working on, you know, 15-minute intervals when he's charging us.
Yep.
Yeah, no, that, that's fine. I just was, want to make sure he wasn't.
No, but right, but right now it's in, right now it's in a holding pattern, so. And I do want him to be in contact with Ken Comia. I did ask them when Ken gets his plan together and what he's gonna do with the affordable housing to again converse with Richard on it to make sure that they're, they're not overlapping that work. So whatever he's gonna cover that Richard won't, just kind of correlate their, their work.
That sounds good. A motion to approve the warrant for Richard Harris' time for February.
A second.
All in favor? Hi.
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 That's it, folks. I'm sorry to bore you with a minute, but it's my fault.
No, that's fine. It's good to get it done. And to be honest, it doesn't hurt to, I don't know, since I wasn't there for some of them, it doesn't hurt to see some of the stuff that I then heard about the later iteration of it or whatever.
It's, it's interesting. I had thought years ago when Jim Labrie was on the board and he was also on the select board at the time too, that we thought that somebody who hadn't been at a meeting couldn't, if you don't know what's going on, and how could you vote to approve or disapprove? He said that it's, that's not, it's not true. You you, you can, you just take the trust your fellow board members that what happened, happened, and you can vote on that.
Yeah.
Otherwise, like tonight, if we had a quorum and you had to abstain or Dan had to abstain, they wouldn't get approved.
Right. Yeah, no, I agree.
All right. I don't have anything else unless you guys got anything to report from any of your other subcommittees.
Nothing good. I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. And you can go back to bed.
I wasn't, I was, just forgot. I'm sorry.
I just
You got, you got me. Well, you said, good thing you sent me a text, because I really did forget about the meeting. So, thank you.
You're pretty prompt, so I thought maybe something was gone or.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
All right, well, have a good week ahead and we'll see you again, hopefully, if there's some agenda items in two weeks.
All right, sounds good. Thanks, Paul.
Take care. Good night.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.